Chair Williams, we're ready to begin.
Thank you. Okay, welcome to this regular meeting of the Planning Commission this Tuesday evening, February 14th, and Happy Valentine's Day. I now call this meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, eternal, just as for all. Okay, good evening and welcome, everybody. We're excited to be here in person and also to have options for virtual participation. So for those attending in person, please complete a yellow Request to Speak slip and hand it to the clerk. And if you're participating remotely, use the Raise Your Hand feature in Zoom, and you will be called upon at the appropriate time.
I'm sorry, Chair Williams, but we need a call roll.
Oh, gosh, I'm out of practice. I think I did that last time. Would you please call roll?
Yes, Chair Williams.
Present.
Vice Chair Nutter.
Present.
Commissioner Nugent.
Present.
Commissioner Patel.
Present.
And Commissioner Wiggins is absent.
Thank you. Okay, so now I'll let, I'll start again. Good evening and welcome. We're excited to have two options, to have people be here in person or to join remote through virtual participation. So for those attending in person, please complete a yellow Request to Speak slip and hand it to the clerk. And if you're participating remotely, use the Raise Your Hand feature in Zoom, and you will be called upon at the appropriate time. If you're calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. Okay, so the first item is the Consent Calendar. Ashley, will you please read the consent calendar?
Yes. Item number one, approve the minutes of the special meetings of November 17th, 2022, and January 12th, 2023, and the regular meeting of December 13th, 2022.
Thank you. Are there any members of the Planning Commission who would like to pull this item from the consent calendar? Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on any consent calendar item? And now would be the time to make your comments. This is for the consent calendar items only. Okay, doesn't look like we have anyone. Okay, I would like to request a motion, but first I want to make note that I was not at, the, the meeting minutes are for November, December, and January, and I was not at the January 12th, 2023 meeting, so I will be abstaining from that. But at this time, would anyone like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes or approve the consent calendar?
I would like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Okay, can I have a second?
A second.
Can I have a roll call vote?
Yes, Chair Williams.
Approved with the exception of January 13th, oh, January 12th.
Vice Chair Nutter.
Approved.
Commissioner Nugent.
Approved.
Commissioner Patel.
Approved.
And Commissioner Wiggins is absent.
All right, consent calendar is approved. All right, moving on to the public comment period. Next on the agenda is public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item that is not appearing on the agenda may address the Planning Commission at this time. State law prevents the Planning Commission from taking action on any matter that's not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. Public comment is generally limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, that's subject to the commission's discretion and can be extended if the commission wishes to do so. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on anything that's not on the agenda?
Chair Williams, there's one public commenter via Zoom. And then I just want to confirm, Daniel, are you speaking for the item or for public comments? Okay, all right, so we have one public commenter then.
Okay, let's go right ahead.
And Chair Williams, for the time of three minutes?
Yes, that's fine.
Jennifer, you can go ahead and unmute.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Can you hear us?
Wonderful. Yes, thank you. My name is Jennifer Martinez. I live in North Fremont Street, and I'm calling to follow up on some comments that I made at the last Planning Commission hearing where we discussed the housing element. My comments refer to affirmatively furthering fair housing. That is important to the passage of the housing element. And I, I wanted to make a comment because I think it's, while we do not yet have an approved housing element, I want to make sure that this is something we are paying attention to as a city, that even in the discussions of this evening and in future weeks while we wait for HCD's decision about our housing element, that we are paying attention to ensuring that fair housing is happening in our city even while we don't have an official plan in place to execute on. So thank you for the time. I appreciate being allowed to speak on this, on this topic.
Certainly. Thank you for your comments. Are there any other members of the public?
Chair Williams, we don't have any more commenters.
Okay, great. All right, at this time, we can move on to the next agenda item, which is the public hearing. So would you please read the agenda item for us?
Yes, item number two, 435 East Third Avenue, new five-story office slash residential mixed-use building, PA 2021 081.
Thank you. So what we'll do is we'll start with a staff presentation, followed by an applicant presentation, clarifying questions from the planning commissioners, and then public comments. The applicant will be given up to 15 minutes to present, and members of the public are given two to three minutes depending on how many, on the number of speakers we have. The applicant may also be given five minutes at the end to respond to the public comments if they'd like. Once the public hearing is closed, then the commission will deliberate and render a decision on the project. Finally, if a decision is made tonight, the decision of the Planning Commission on this project can be appealed to the City Council within 10 calendar days. Okay, so welcome, Rendell. Will you go ahead?
Sure. Thank you, Chair Williams, members of the Planning Commission, Rendell Bustos, Senior Planner and Staff Presenter for Agenda Item Two, a public hearing for 435 East Third Avenue Mixed-Use Project. So to start, I'll begin with an overview of the project, including its location, project description, its required entitlements, and other background information. So starting with their project location, this is an aerial showing the project's vicinity, which is in the city's downtown area east of the downtown core. The project site is located on the northwest corner of East Third Avenue and South Claremont Street. This map also illustrates the location of the downtown Caltrain Station, which is about a quarter of a mile from the project site shown on this map in red. In addition, this map shows the location of the site for requested for off-site construction staging shown in green. The site has a parcel area of approximately a quarter of an acre or about 11,035 square feet. The site has a general plan, land use designation of downtown retail core support and a zone CBD slash S for central business district support. The existing use consists of an auto repair business with a variety of surrounding commercial uses, which is shown here. The existing uses, adjacent uses consist of mostly commercial uses, including various service uses, a grocery store, and restaurants. In addition, more recent developments that are either recently constructed or approved are across East Third Avenue, which are the 406 East Third Avenue project and Block 21 development. Lastly, the project site abuts an existing historic resource immediately to its western property line, which is shown in the lower right-hand side of the screen. So for the project description, the project is a five-story mixed-use building with about 33,000 square, 33,000 square feet of office uses on the first four floors, as well as five residential units on the fifth floor. The project devotes 20% of those five units to the low-income category, which is equivalent to one unit. So as proposed, this project will necessitate three planning entitlements. First is a site plan and architectural review to allow for the removal of the existing use and to construct the proposed building. Second is a site development planning application for the removal of a total of 31 trees, which include four protected trees and six off-site trees. And lastly, a specialty use permit to authorize the use of a nearby lot for off-site construction staging. So a bit on the project's history, the applicant filed the pre-application in 2021, which consisted of a neighborhood meeting and a planning commission study session, in which the commission provided input on topics such as building design and the project's density bonus requests. The applicant then filed the formal application in December of 2021, and during this process refined the building design as well as the density bonus requests. And lastly, staff had an initial study and mitigated negative declaration prepared in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, which was circulated for public review in October of 2022. With respect to public input, staff prepared a public notice in preparation for this meeting, which is mailed at a radius of 1,000 feet, along with specific interested parties. A placard was also placed at the project site, as well as publication into the San Mateo Daily Journal. All public's, public comments have been forwarded to the Planning Commission, which included comments pertaining to design, parking, residential uses, as well as support for the project. So shifting now to the applicable codes and policies, where staff, where staff will cover local codes, state law, design review, as well as environmental review. So starting with local requirements, the general plan denotes a project, again, as downtown retail core support, which is consistent with its zoning of CBD slash S. And so this table shows the list of applicable development standards in this zone. The project does comply with all applicable standards with the exception of floor area ratio, or FAR, which the applicant requests to increase via a state density bonus law incentive request, which will be covered in coming slides. And with respect to additional local policy documents, the project is subject to the downtown area plan, which, similar to the general plan, outlines goals and policies for downtown, downtown projects. The pedestrian master plan lists recommendations for sidewalk widths based on a project's land use and street parking configuration. So as listed here, the project does comply with a minimum sidewalk width along South Claremont Street, but not along the East Third Avenue frontage. It should be noted, though, that the zoning code, which does supersede these guidelines, will gen, will generally require, require zero setback. And lastly, the bike master plan lists infrastructural improvements to improve and support bicycle use. So specific to this project's frontages, a separated bike lane is called for along the project's East Third Avenue frontage, and a bike boulevard, which consists of pavement markings, is called for along the South Claremont Street frontage. So shifting now to state laws, I do want to highlight that the project is not subject to the Housing Accountability Act, or HAA, since it is less than two-thirds housing. The project is, however, subject to state density bonus law, in that it provides the minimum five units, of which one is an affordable one-bedroom unit. The applicant does not request any waivers, but does request an incentive, as noted previously, for the increased floor area ratio from 3.0 to 3.61. And lastly, the project is subject to Assembly Bill 2097, which became effective in January of this year. AB 2097 specifically removes parking requirements for projects that are within a half-mile of a major public transit stop, which this project does qualify for, given its proximity to the downtown Caltrain Station. So this law thus removes the city's ability to collect in Lufes, which is a request that the applicant had originally made in the pre-application. So with regard to design review, the project is not subject to a specific design guideline document, but is subject to goals and policies in the urban design element of the general plan. So those policies are outlined in Attachment One, but at a high level, the overall style is contemporary, but includes traditional elements, mainly through its use of brick veneer as its primary material. As noted previously, the commission last reviewed this preapplication in November of 2021 and provided input on that design. So on this screen is the updated design, and since the study session, the applicant incorporated changes to the materials, mainly include the inclusion of brick along both of the interior facades, based on the commission's input, as well as refinements to the residential entry along South Claremont Street and improved color selection with respect to the proposed wood cladding. And lastly, on environmental review, staff, again, prepared an initial study and mitigated negative declaration, or IS MND, in compliance with SEQA. The MND also requires the adoption of a mitigation monitoring and reporting program, which lists various mitigation measures listed here to bring impacts such as air quality, biological resources, and others to, to a less than significant impact. So again, this IS MND was circulated between October 7th and October 27th of 2022, in which staff received three public comment letters. No public comment resulted in additional analysis, new impacts, or worsened impacts that then required recirculation. On February 2nd, however, staff did issue a response memo, as well as minor text edits, mainly to clarify the removal of the incentive requests for parking requirements in light of AB 2097. So as part of the initial study preparation, staff's transportation consultant, Farron Pierce, prepared a Transportation Impact Analysis, or TIA, that analyzes the project's impact to traffic. The TIA finds that in accordance with SEQA, the project does not result in any impact to vehicle miles traveled, or VMT, in that it meets the city's screening criteria as a high-quality transit area project, given its proximity to the downtown Caltrain Station. In addition to VMT, the TIA analyzes the project's Level of Service, or LOS, based on general plan requirements, and finds that the project does not result in any adverse impacts to, to LOS. The project does result in net new ham and PM peak hour trips, as well as an increase in the average daily trips. But nonetheless, the, the analysis does find that the project will not cause significant impacts in the opening year conditions, which accounts for projects, accounts for this project, as well as nearby projects that were approved at the time of this analysis. So given the project's increase in average daily trips, the project is required to implement a Transportation Demand Management Plan, or TDM Plan, that needs to reach a minimum of 25% trip reduction. The city's consultant, Steer Group, has prepared a TDM Plan that includes provisions for components such as an ongoing TDM coordinator, bike, bike support facilities, which includes bike showers and lockers, and a transportation incentive that requires provision of a $100 voucher, which altogether results in an overall reduction of approximately 26.5%. So prior to concluding with staff's recommendation, I did want to note that there would be, will be one edit to the resolution specific to Condition of Approval 18, as shown on the screen here. The version published in the Agenda Packet lists specific hours for recology servicing. However, staff is recommending that we modify this condition to omit those specific hours to allow the applicant to confirm those hours with, with recology. And so as revised, this condition would allow replacement of lost metered stalls through provision of new metered spaces, or payment of an Luffy as, as outlined here. So staff would include this edit to the resolution prior to signature, should the commission adopt the staff recommendation with this amended condition. So with that, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution to the project's site plan, architectural review, site development planning application, and specialty use permit with the modified conditions of approval, as well as a mitigated negative declaration assessing the environmental impacts of the project. This concludes staff's presentation. Happy to take questions for staff. The applicant is present this evening and will be providing a presentation. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Rendell. At this time, I would like to ask the applicant if you'd like to make a presentation. Great.
How are you? It's good to be with you.
Good, welcome.
Hey, I appreciate your show. Okay, let's see if this works here. As always, Rendell makes it so I don't have to do much of anything. So let's see. We'll all wait just one moment for the presentation to come up. Okay, it's good to be with you tonight. Rendell's already shown you quite a bit about the project, and so I'll try and add some additional color and answer any questions that you might have. So a little bit about us, for those watching and those here, you know, we're a downtown San Mateo property owner. Some of you may have seen that Block 21 demolition has finally started after a six-month delay from PG&E, but don't get me started on that. We primarily build mixed-use communities, so office with apartments, and then apartment communities as well. All of our developments are really in the mid peninsula, so geographically, mountain view to South San Francisco. We don't, we try not to venture beyond kind of those areas. We have a current multifamily 250-unit project in Belmont. We recently completed a 57-unit apartment building in Palo Alto and completed an office building in downtown Rosewood City. So those are our most recent three. And of course, the beautiful building at Third and Claremont in downtown San Mateo that we completed about a year ago. This particular corner is an interesting one. So there was a change in the family. They'd owned the property for a long time. The tenant had been there for a long time. And the family approached us, wondering if we had interest in the property. The property is landlocked, so the Ismerians owned the lot adjacent, and then you heard about the historic resource that's on the other property line. And so initially, we weren't quite sure what, what could be done. And we had built a building at the Three Corners project, and we kind of envisioned this being similar to that, in that this is a high-identity corner, really, you know, the gateway into B Street, i.e. the downtown core. And so we thought that there would be value in beautifying that corner. The existing building is beyond its useful life, and we worked with the tenant, who had occupied this building for some time, and worked with him so that it would be a positive outcome for him, as well as for the property owners. And so with those two items resolved, we elected to move forward and to try and find a project that made sense. As Rendell talked about, this was a long time ago. This was before a lot of things have happened since then. And so if we conceptualize this project anew today, it would look different. There would be more housing on it. But because it's kind of a product of its time, it was conceptualized to be under the height limit and to be in conformance with the zoning code, with the exception of one item, which Rendell already talked about. So it's a small site. It's too small for subterranean parking. And so that's why it doesn't have any. The office is approximately 33,000 feet, so in comparison to some of the other projects we've built, it's for a different type of tenancy, a smaller technology or service companies. The five residential units are larger than the units we've done on other buildings in the downtown. They're, it'll be a pretty special residential environment, private elevator service, right, all of this for just, for just five, five units. So not a lot of economies of scale on this project, but we knew we wanted to provide some housing, even back in 2021, when the project was conceptualized. So one of the one-bedroom units is affordable, which gets us the, you know, kudos of being at 20%, even though if you look at the math, there's really no other way to do it. But it is the one-bedroom and not the studio. There are larger units. The building's five stories in height. You've seen the residential entries and the improvements we tried to make to that based upon feedback that we got when we've, when we presented the project previously. We are quite happy with how the building turned out, given the, the size constraints. And I think that the building will look very good in that location, and the height, given the overall dimensions, is still very manageable. Where some of the other buildings that we ended up going taller on, they are much larger sites. And so I, I think although ideally we would have more residential here, the trade-off is, I think, the height fits the size of the overall structure. So, you know, some of the benefits of redevelopment of this corner will obviously be substantial street improvements. Rendell talked about bike lanes, trees, lights, street furniture. All these things will continue to make this part of the community more accessible and more more inviting as residents come into the downtown from their homes. The project will be responsible for paying approximately a $1 million commercial linkage fee, which, in addition to the five units provided, you know, will continue to help support residential in the city. Randall talked about VMT and the TDM measures, so I'll, I'll kind of skip both of those. But both of those, that this, you know, TDM measures for us on all of our projects, whether required or not, are standard. Randall went through the schedule a little bit, the calendar. This one's been hanging out there a long time, and so, for various reasons, the project comes before you today, but we're happy to finally be here. This is the few, the view from Third. You see the office lobby on the left, closest to downtown. The hard corner, we did some significant improvements to, based upon comments that we got, to make it more of a pedestrian-focused corner, where there's seating and, you know, it's certainly a significant change to that corner, and we think a positive change in creating a gateway into the downtown from Highway 101. This is a little more of an aerial view, shows you the outdoor balconies. The apartments have private outdoor balconies, and then there's also an outdoor area for the occupants of the office space. But when you visualize the street as it exists today versus the street improvements that you see there, some of the benches, planters, you know, brickwork, hardscape, it is a significant improvement. This is the Claremont side of the building. You can see the apartment entrance there. Again, it'll be a wonderful, you know, five-unit apartment community. They'll have, you know, their own private elevator access, their own stairs, their own outdoor balconies. This is a site plan that shows you some of the site improvements, and as well as the bull bout, which, you know, will continue to improve the pedestrian and bicycle experience in the downtown, or into the downtown. I'm going to skip most of these. This shows kind of stairs and elevators and such. Here's the apartment four plan. So, I believe, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Lisa, but it's the second unit from the top is the BMR unit, one-bedroom, and then you have the other three one-bedrooms and the studio. And all of them have their own private outdoor balcony. And that concludes my presentation. Happy to take any questions that you might have.
Great. Thank you for your presentation. At this time, I wanted to check and see if there are clarifying questions from the planning commissioners. Seema, do you have any questions?
Yes, to the chair, thank you. I have just one question. I'm curious about the construction timelines, if you have that information. I noticed there were a couple of public comments about the amount of construction happening right now, and so, I was curious, is the intent that the construction of this would happen concurrent with Block 21 or on a different schedule?
Yeah, I think our intent is that the construction would happen, so this building would be erected much faster than Block 21. So, total construction duration for this building is probably somewhere between 14 and 16 months. Block 21 is more like 34 months. So, this building would likely be able to start sometime in the fourth quarter of this year and would be complete within 16 months.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Abnett, do you have any comments or questions, rather?
Just one for the applicant. I know that on the first floor, there's bicycle parking of 96 square feet, and it looks like it's for the commercial side or the office side. Is there separate parking for the residents for bicycles also in interior or not? Or is it, is it shared?
Yes. No, the, there's bicycle parking on the apartment level for the apartment users. So, if you, so, can we move that back? It's okay. So, the floor.
Oh, I see it. It's on the fifth. Okay.
So, the intent would be that they come out of the elevator core and can immediately deposit their bike in the bike storage outside of their unit, or they can take it into their unit. But given the number of units, if they have a bike, they're going to put it in that room.
Cool. Thanks.
Yeah.
Is that your only question?
That was it for now. Stay here.
Do you have any questions?
Yes. This is actually, I have two questions, and it's probably best directed towards staff. And the first one is just to, I'm asking if you could go into a little bit more information on how the city deals with the removal of protected trees, what were the mitigation measures for that, and what is the applicant doing?
Sure. So, through the chair, removal of trees, whether protected or not, does require a site development planning application. So, the project does propose removal of all onsite trees, as well as some adjacent street trees, as well as neighboring trees. So, what staff would do, if the decision moves forward to approve their project during the building permit phase, we would issue a site development permit that authorizes the removal of those trees.
And then, what, what does the applicant, so does the city require the applicant to do something in exchange for getting approval for the removal of those trees?
Yes. So, as part of the site development permit, we would also be approving replacement trees, including street trees and/or replacement via landscape unit and lufies, which then would fund street trees throughout the city. So, it's combination of an aloofy as well as replacement trees.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. The next question is just to, just to ask is, so the zoning is central business district support, and it looks like the proposed uses are allowed. So, it's not, we're not looking for any sort of, you know, contingent or, or something that would not be allowed in this site. We don't have, we're not looking to approve something that's not allowed. Is that correct?
Correct. There is no special use permit required for the uses proposed at the 435 East Third Avenue site, so office uses and residential uses are permitted. The only special use permit that's being requested is for the adjacent site at 402 South Delaware for staging, so not directly related to the permanent construction.
And is that staging site also being used for other construction projects?
Yes. The commission approved a special use permit at that site for the, related to the Block 21 development.
Okay. So, it's already in use for construction staging?
Correct. It will be in use for construction staging, but specific to the Block 21 development. Staff tied a SUP related to this project, that we can have conditions that require the applicant to return that site to a standard vacant lot after this 435 East Third Avenue, if it moves forward, is constructed.
Okay. Thank you so much.
All right. I have a couple of comments as well, or questions, rather, as well. And the first one actually is about the removal of the trees. I noticed in the packet, and you just said it as well, which is that it says replacement and/or in lufies. So, my understanding is they're not replacing the same number of trees that are being removed. So, I would think it would be, I would think that we wouldn't need the or in the, in the conditions of approval. It should say, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I would think that it would say replacement of the trees as, you know, as designed, and the applicable, the prorated in lufies, or something like that. Am I correct?
Yeah, to the chair. Yeah, that is correct. Given the number of trees that are moved, it's very likely that an aloofy would be required, so that's correct. We do have standard conditions, though, where we have an and/or, because the option is available to applicants, not just of this project, to replace the trees onsite. I think the key thing to note is that it's not really just about the quantity of trees. Every tree has a landscape unit. It has to do with its age, its health, its species, and so, the applicant is responsible for replacing that equivalent lost landscape unit value through replacement of trees, which themselves have a landscape unit value, in this case, and payment of an aloofy.
Okay. Great. I just want to make sure that was, as I understood it. Then, let's see. Oh, I also had a question about the fifth floor, this might be for the applicant, the fifth-floor roof deck, and I really like that there's separate kind of bioswells, I guess, or at least planters, anyway, separating the balconies, I guess, for each unit. But how does anyone access, like, who maintains those? And if it's not the residents, then there's no way to access it for anyone else?
So, the, there's a roof deck on the lower floor for the office occupants, and then the top four apartments have their own private roof balconies. Those are managed by our apartment management company, just like the interior spaces, the elevator, the bike storage, you know, the interior hallways. All of those are managed by an apartment management company. I'm not sure if those are bioswells, or if those are screens, solid-walled screens. I would have to go back and look at the rendering. But, so they're accessed from their unit, and they're maintained by the property management company.
Okay.
Is that the question?
Yes. So, in other words, it's clear on the plans that someone would have to come through the unit.
That's right.
To maintain the planter.
That's right. Even access to this floor won't be possible by the general public. So, the elevator will be key-card controlled, and so, even if someone were to get into the apartment door, like by tailgating or something like that, the apartment entry, you have to go through a myriad of secure areas in order to get upstairs.
My question wasn't so much, you know, that.
Privacy.
It was more like how, no, it's the opposite. It's like, how is someone going to get to those planters?
From their unit.
So, the, so the residents are responsible for maintaining those planters?
I don't believe they're planters, but we can look at it. Are they planters?
They indicated that they were handling storm drainage or roof drainage.
Yeah, they might be bioswells, but I'm not, so, we would have plant material that wouldn't be heavily intensive, I guess, is what I would say.
Those planters are for stormwater treatment. They've actually been relocated down a level because of that.
Oh, okay.
One of those situations to maintain the privacy of the residents, but there will be dividers between them.
Okay.
So, they'll still maintain their privacy, just without the planters.
Got it. That makes more sense. I mean, in terms of how is someone going to get to those? Thank you. Let me just see. I mean, I think the rest is. I had a question about the shade studies, but I mean, it's not really a question, so that's okay. All right. I think that completely, oh, do you have another question?
I do. Thank you.
Go right in.
To the chair. So, since our housing element has been submitted to the state for review, and the council has adopted it, what guidelines do we apply to this project as it pertains to affirmatively furthering fair housing? And I'm at a little bit of a loss to be able to determine if this project meets the thresholds that the state has required us to make to approve a project without, or to approve a project that does meet affirmatively furthering fair housing.
Sure. So, through the chair, I'm happy to start, and I would be happy to pass it to others at the DIAS to add on. It's my understanding that the housing element may result in, you know, changes to policies and codes to support the goals of the housing element. With that said, those policies and codes aren't adopted at this time. So, the requirements that are in place at the moment are what applies to the project, and so, the commission should be considering, you know, the zoning requirements, general plan requirements, density requirements, as outlined in the packet, in the findings for approval, and the various supporting attachments, but I'll.
Good evening. Manira Santir, planning manager. I think Randall captured it. So, the housing element that was adopted by the city council lays out goals, policies, and programs that would result in code amendments or other requirements that further, you know, the goals to affirmatively further fair housing and other goals related to production of housing and preservation of housing. But at this time, there's nothing specific in the housing element that would apply to this project.
So, is our current housing element out of compliance with the state?
No, I, I didn't understand the question. It was adopted by the city council. It met all the statutory requirements and is now submitted to HCD.
Correct, but we're not supposed to follow the 2023 housing element. We're supposed to follow the one prior to that?
No, I believe we would be following the current, the adopted 2023 housing element, but Zach, if you have anything further to add, or Mazerin?
I guess we would ask, what specifically are you identifying that this project is not complying with?
I'm not saying it's not compliant. I'm trying to figure out if it is. So, I'm trying to understand how I look at this project and determine if it affirmatively furthers fair housing. That's my concern.
I think you need to look at how AFFH is framed, and it's generally not project by project. There's larger policies and programs that get implemented, and then how they influence individual projects can vary, but you're not looking at each project for specific compliance with AFFH. It's a larger issue that the city addresses more citywide, as opposed to project by project.
Okay. Yet, the city or the state's requirements do say that each and every project needs to, needs to affirmatively furthering fair housing. You're saying it's more of an aggregate, but I do know that it does say that each project needs to affirmatively further fair housing. And I'm curious, do we have any type of matrix like we have for the cap, where we can go through and say, yes, it has meet these, these are the requirements, it has met these requirements, it does affirmatively further fair housing?
I think we would need to go back and look at that specific language, but that's not something that I'm familiar with in terms of a project-by-project compliance matrix.
Okay. I didn't notice in the conditions, in the findings, and I may have missed it, specifically addressing affirmatively fair housing. Is it, is it somehow incorporated in our, in our findings? I haven't seen it called out. Maybe I missed it. I don't know.
I think we, I would kind of go back to the point of, is there something specific that you have found that this, that you feel this project does not comply with?
Okay, so let me put it another way. This project will exasperate the housing-to-jobs imbalance. So, does the city of San Mateo look at this project as a hindrance to affirmatively furthering fair housing?
I don't believe those two issues are directly related.
Oh, you don't? Okay. So, so, creation of jobs without creation of housing isn't, they are not related as the city thinks is to affirmatively furthering fair housing. Am I correct?
Through the chair, if I may interject on that. So, the affirmatively furthering fair housing, one way to look at this project could be that they are proposing one unit that is affordable. Staff did condition that that one unit should be the one-bedroom and not the studio unit, because our requirements say that, you know, the affordable units should be treated equally like market-rate units, and that is one way that this project is affirmatively furthering fair housing. Again, going back to the housing element and the general plan, yes, there are policies in the general plan that speak to the jobs-housing balance, but that's not on a project-by-project basis. I think that's on a citywide basis. We have projects that are multifamily projects that do not include any office spaces, so it does vary, and that's not a criteria that staff has applied on a project-by-project basis.
Okay. So, I'll just make one other question comment, and I think that this has been part of a discussion in past settings, discussed by Seema or put forward by Seema, correct me if I'm wrong, where we are looking to see if we have current housing and commercial square footage for us to understand where we might be in our housing-to-jobs imbalance, because again, it's very difficult for me to say, yes, this meets AFFH, because we may be looking at it globally, yet each project has an effect, and if we don't have that information. And if we don't have that information, it makes it that much more difficult for me to say, yes, I think this is the best project for this city, or no, it's not. So I'm looking for tools and I don't seem to be able to gra- grasp them if we have put them together for, for me personally to make these decisions.
Through the chair, I don't know, Zach, if we have numbers. I know as a part of the general plan update, John there, our commissioner, Ebner, that we are looking at the jobs housing balance. And in the city, what we've found is that it's not so much of a jobs housing imbalance issue as much as a jobs housing fit issue and a match issue where a lot of people are commuting in or commuting out. However, this particular project, I think is, you know, has, at least in staff's recommendation, shows that it's consistent with the policies that we currently have. We are looking at policies in the future that address these issues, but we cannot apply to, apply those to this project.
Okay, thank you. So, Rendell, for the, the traffic study, I, I think that it's a little bit of new terminology for me and it's actually a little bit clearer than it used to be. But we've got existing conditions which mean existing traffic volumes. And you've got opening year conditions, existing traffic volumes plus traffic generated by the nearby approved projects. And then opening year plus project conditions. So I think what, that some of the upcoming projects I know haven't, weren't included in the studies at the time this study was done, because this was done prior to them being approved.
Through the chair, yeah, generally that is correct. The 435 East Third Avenue analysis was done well before projects such as Block 21, Drager's, I think the only two in, in the vicinity of this neighborhood, of this project that would result in new trips through nearby intersections. Again, those were not approved at the time of the analysis being prepared for 435 East Third.
So, but the, but the, the document does say that, you know, we have established the opening year conditions, yet it's void of two or three pretty important or larger sized projects in the general area. How do we know that our traffic study is accurate if those projects are not included in the study?
I'll start off and I, I may ask staff from Farron Pierce, the city's traffic consultant, to chime in. But it was an important consideration at the staff level to try to find a balance of what projects would likely cause impacts to the general area or the neighborhood in which this project lies. Sometimes project schedules just are difficult to speculate as to when they would be approved. So it would not be good customer service to hold up this project and to wait for projects such as Drager's or Block 21 to be completed and to have those analysis be completed before we started analysis on 43, 435 East Third, but I'll kick it to, to Matt going from Farron Pierce. I believe he's on, on, on the Zoom.
Yeah, thanks commissioner for the question. So a couple, a couple of things on this. One being that this project is very, is quite small. And so when city staff and we were looking at the amount of trips that we'd be generating, we're, it really looks at, you know, we're talking about 10 to 15 new trips that are distributed across the vehicle, across the roadway network. So we're really thinking about what is the effect of one new trip every five to six minutes or so on the network? And since there's no parking here, which is one of the, you know, more effective measures to reduce the amount of traffic a project generates, the, the vehicle trips that are generated are going to be distributed to other parking garages in, in the area. And so they aren't concentrated in any one location. And so by this, what the traffic analysis shows is that with that change, there's really no noticeable impact, a change to the amount of delay at any intersection. And so, so that's really the first point of just how, what's, what does this project do? What does this project do to the surrounding neighborhood? I'd also cite that other studies have gone forward already, including the Block 21 traffic study, which found that the intersections nearby, including all of the growth, the cumulative growth in this area, that's projected as part of, you know, the general plan and, and regional growth projections, showed that the operations at intersections nearby, such as on Third Avenue, would continue to operate acceptably in the future with that growth. So that allowed, just gave confidence for when we're doing this study to screen out additional analysis.
Thank you for that. I appreciate the, the explanation. I had one other question. Is there anybody from Public Works on the, on the call tonight?
We do not.
Yeah, okay. So I think part of public or Public Works' conditions of approval is you need to, to prove that you can handle a storm of a certain magnitude from your, on, on your site and how, how your site, how the, the drainage would work. And I'll have to get ahold of Public Works separately because I don't know what size of storms they project coming forward. I know what they used to, to design the sewage treatment plant, but I don't know if that's the same as they're using for their storm flows at each one of these projects. So I'll, I'll get ahold of Public Works myself. Thank you for the information, Rendell. That's it, Margaret.
All right, that's all of the clarifying questions from the planning commission. So at this time, I can open it up for public comment. So again, if you have, if you would like to make a public comment, please make sure to turn in your request to speak slip. And Ashley, how many speakers do we have at this time?
Chair Williams, right now we have two speakers in person and three speakers over Zoom.
Okay, great. So why don't we go ahead and get started and we'll do three minutes per person at this time?
Okay, we're going to start with in-person speakers first. Lori Watanuki, you can come up to the microphone.
Madam Chair and members of the planning commission, my name is Lori Watanuki. I'm a San Mateo resident. In the consultants' responses to our questions in the mitigated negative declaration, we're now using 1,000 square feet per employee for 34,000 square foot of office. This comes out to 34 employees. I do think this really needs to be recalculated because this is really being underestimated. Realistically, there could be 224 employees at 150 square feet in this project. If the economy changes, there's going to be far more traffic and parking impacts. There are two parking garages designated for the project. Kiku Crossing is one. The other one is the Main Street Garage. The Kiku Crossing Garage will have 125 spaces for Kiku Crossing residents. The Windy Hill Office Project and the Clock Tower Project, both at Third and El Camino Real, and also the monthly permit parking holders. So this parking has been spoken for. We'd like to know what are the hours of operation for the Kiku Crossing Garage? The Main Street Garage will only be open between 2:00 AM and 5:00 PM. Are you changing the hours of operation for the Main Street Garage? So these two garages will have their limitations. We need an easier and a faster process for the residential parking permit program. There will be overflow parking to the surrounding neighborhoods. And we need to address the commercial parking impacts with the 18 proposed buildings for the downtown area with more realistic analysis and follow-up surveys after these buildings are finished. We need to figure out really if they are taking Caltrain. We need directional signage to use Third Avenue in and Fourth Avenue out to and from the Kiku Crossing Garage. We need to reduce the commercial cut through traffic on Fifth. And we'd like to know when you're going to implement the slow street for Fifth Avenue. The exterior lights, night views show fluorescent lights under the eaves and in between the large windows with bright interior lights. This interior light situation affects other residential buildings. And this has been mentioned in past neighborhood meetings. So will you provide shades or what is the solution? Not sure if this neon exterior light feature works well with the historic 1863 St. James Hotel or the pre-war Takahashi Single Family Home to the north. Will the Takahashi Single Family Home be monitored for construction vibrations as well? Thank you.
Great. Thanks for your comments. All right, next speaker, please.
Chair Williams, our next speaker is Daniel Sheffin. You can come up to the microphone.
Hi, welcome.
Hi there. I apologize for sounding like a broken record. I just want to emphasize that I agree with my previous speaker that the number of employees stated for this, based on calculations for this building is, is to my personal opinion, very unrealistic. The main point I would like to raise today is that I'm under the impression that intentionally or unintentionally, the planning commission has resigned itself or resigned the city to not take any position on the design of buildings. We have a building that looks like the buildings next to it. It looks like the one that's going up on Aaron, on the Aaron Frame Building on Third, whatever that's called. It looks like the design that's going to go up in Drager's, the design for the one that's going to replace Kelly Moore. And none of those designs, which look like they've been designed in Minecraft, as I stated in the past, look anything like the historical downtown buildings that we all cherish, I hope. And I don't know what the city can do, but I implore the planning commission to do something to at least preserve as much as possible the better aspects of the historical downtown of our city. My last point in request for today, and I don't know how to submit this request, is I am very concerned that with the proliferation of business buildings going up, and I just mentioned a few of them, that Fourth and Third Avenues are simply not up to the task to accommodate the amount of traffic we're going to see in two, four, 10, 15, and 20 years from now. Not to mention the problem with Caltrains and the being closed down, stopping traffic every time a train goes through. And they're intending on increasing the traffic of trains once the line is electrified. So I don't know if it's the professional team, if it's the planning commission. I would appreciate as a resident to better understand what the future looks like and how we're preparing for it in terms of traffic. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments. Who's our next speaker?
Chair Williams, we're moving to our Zoom speakers next. Our next speaker is our Zoom participant identified as Samsung SMG781V. You can go ahead and unmute.
Hi, can you hear us?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, the planning commissioner. My name is Kenneth Doe. I'm a field rep for the Carpenter's Local 217, representing 1,000 construction workers living throughout San Mateo County. In addition, 38,000 members in Northern California. Tonight, I want to speak to you about the need for labor standard. San Mateo should be set an example and be the standard of what's doing right for blue collar families. Labor standard would give us livable wage with medical retirement benefits that allows workers and their families to live in the community they work in. This also means those wages will be reinvested back into the local community as they spend their earnings and their tax dollars for health fund local schools and government. Developers and contractors routinely import out of there.
All right, was that everything?
Chair Williams, it looks like he's off the call now.
Okay. I don't know if we lost him midway, but we'll go on to the next speaker.
Yes, our next speaker is George. George, you can go ahead and unmute.
Hi, can you hear us?
Uh, yes, I can. So I just wanted to second the comment from the commission regarding drainage. This neighborhood had, had sewage backup during the heavy rains in January, which is very indicative of a very old sewer system, some of it dating back to, you know, last century and I, more than the last century, two centuries ago, 1800s. And no one, none, none of these projects have necessar- have required an upgrade to the sewer system and it's clearly failing. So I, I forget which commission member, but whoever made that comment and was going to research it further, please do. I commend you on that thought. I think you are correct. I also second the comment by the gentleman that said about the design of this building. It looks like a cookie cutter, adobe cut and paste, windy hill building. No setback, no green space, no match whatsoever to the historical building that's abutting it. It really, it doesn't fit in with anything except the new buildings that have been popping up, which, you know, are pure office space. In that regard, this is yet another office building with no provision for any kind of retail, ground floor retail, neighborhood retail. That's actually a retail corner. Windy Hill did not succeed in destroying the, the retail that was, the existing retail that was on that corner with their project across the street. And that retail remains as proof positive that, what's his name? Michael Fields is completely wrong about the need for neighborhood retail on the east side of San Mateo. Some of us are coming to believe that this is actually a racist destruction of a disadvantaged ethnically diverse neighborhood by converting it into just an office park for the benefit of real estate developers and the wealthier parts of this city. So reevaluate that. Let's get a building with more residential and more residential neighborhood space. We really don't need more office space. And I think once people start recalculating the needs for office space with remote, with remote work, I think we'll be starting to find that out. And I would, I guess that's it for my comments. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you for your comments, George. Next speaker?
Chair Williams, it looks like Kenneth Doe is back on the call and he had about two minutes left.
Sure, let's have him rejoin. Is the last speaker.
So Kenneth can go ahead and unmute now.
Hi, welcome back.
Okay, Kenneth from Carpenter's 217. Let me finish my spill. So developers and contractors routinely import out of the area or out of state workforce. This perpetual cycle undercuts the wage of local workers, exploits workers recruiting from afar, and allow for continued underinvestment in the much needed apprenticeship program that would benefit the community. Developers and contractors should be held to do the right thing and pay error standard wages. With your leadership, we can send a message to all developers and contractors of the San Mateo area by adopting labor standard that would safeguard the working class, men and women of our beautiful city. We would love to have a real value meeting with each and every one of you to answer questions you might have about what labor violation is or what labor standards should look like for all these reasons.
I lost him again.
Yes, Chair Williams, we lost him again, but we do have one last speaker.
Okay, let's go on to the next last speaker.
Um, Olja, you can go ahead and unmute.
Hi, my name is Olja and I'm a resident of San Mateo. I would like to bring your attention to the fact that we have way too much construction going on in downtown area. Pretty much everywhere I go, I see construction going. And often by the same developer, like in this case, Windy Hill. I'm wondering if it makes sense to reevaluate this option and maybe to limit the construction and maybe not allow it within certain area or construction by the same developer, which will allow us time to see if the contractors, if the developers are coming through on their promises, if the buildings are working. promises, if the buildings are working exactly like they said they would, if the traffic matches their prognosis. And in general, San Mateo downtown will be a much more pleasant place to live if we don't have construction going on in every corner. And in some cases, even if construction is not starting yet, the business is already moving out, so that place looks kind of forgotten and not very well taken care of. So that's one point I would like to make. And another one is unfortunately, this project by Windy Hill again allows very little sidewalk space, which is even less than 16 feet allowed, as I understand. We have so much more people living in San Mateo. Every time I'm walking downtown, there's a crowd on the street, and we should be making those sidewalks wider, not smaller, and plant more trees, and not to remove trees and such quantities. It seems like Windy Hill is firmly committed to deforestation of San Mateo. If you look at their buildings alongside the railroad avenue, they really look like a prison yard, not a single tree. Everything is just bare stone, concrete, really looks ugly. San Mateo is not what it used to be ever since Windy Hill began building their projects there. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Okay, do we have any other speakers?
Chair Williams, we don't have any more speakers.
Okay. All right. So at this time, we'll close the public comment period for this project, for this item, and the applicant is entitled to a five-minute opportunity to respond to the comments.
You know, certainly, we continue to try and engage the public as much as possible in San Mateo. It's something that is, you know, that we're passionate about. I, I, you know, one of the, one of the things that we appreciate about San Mateo is that the community is outspoken, cares, wants to talk to developers about what they like and don't like. And so that's something that we take really seriously. And I think the last eight or nine years since we've been, since our first project in San Mateo, we've, we've really tried to do that. Certainly, some of the comments don't bear talking about, but some of the comments are well-founded. We understand that construction is unpleasant when you live a block from the project. And so, you know, I get text messages in the middle of the night saying my, my construction fence is, you know, gotten blown too far into the sidewalk, and we send someone out, and we address them, and we try to be the best neighbor that we can be. It's, I, on the design side, I really, you know, do disagree. Architecture is always in the eye of the beholder, but we, these buildings are incredibly well-designed. They, the finishes are top of the line. These are not inexpensive, these are not cheap, these are not, this is not a product that you throw up in an effort to be a quote-unquote greedy developer. We could build much less expensive buildings, but we take great pride in the kinds of buildings we design and the kind of buildings that we build. So I understand that everyone has an opinion when it comes to architecture, but I, I will say that, you know, the one, you may not like it, but we didn't go cheap on it. I guess I would say that. We did try and do our best. I don't recall any of the other comments that I particularly want to respond to. I am sympathetic to the one individual that I hear from a lot that continues to pound on the retail. He might be a little bit happier when he sees the resubmital for Block 20, he might not, I don't know. But retail, the corner of Two East Third has been vacant for four years. I would give the space away. It's not about the rent I'm asking. Since SoulCycle moved out, we've had one tenant tour the space. I can't do that. I can't, that's not a sustainable model for a developer. So I understand, you know, that retail is important. Our goal is to support the downtown retail core with, by bringing in jobs and residents. They circulate the downtown core at different times of the day and help retailers have a full day of service. And I think by the restaurants that are coming into downtown and the fact that the downtown retail core survives so well through such a detrimental couple of years is a testament to the fact that there are hundreds of jobs of walking distance to B Street, and those folks kept coming into the office. For CADA, the tenant in those two buildings occupied at 80% all through COVID. They did daily testing in the office to keep their employees, and they kept supporting the downtown. So, you know, you can throw the, throw us under the bus, I'm happy to be that guy. As far as exterior lighting and a lot of these other issues, you know, these are things that we work with city staff and public works to make sure in compliance. We don't admit one watt of light outside that the city doesn't want us to. So, you know, we're doing the best we can there. But that's all I have.
All right. Thank you for your comments back. So at this time, I think we can move on to planning commission deliberation. And who would like to go first? Would you like to go first, Commissioner Hotel?
Thank you, through the chair. I, having heard the public comment, I have some, two additional questions. One, if I remember correctly, from the Block 20 study session, I believe you spoke about labor standards, and I was wondering if you could remind us of what you said and if those same comments apply for this project.
Yeah, and, and, and they do. The vast majority, over 80 to 85% of the total project cost is union labor. So that's important. It's important to San Mateo. It's been important to San Mateo for a long time. And so we understand that it's important to us. And so all the projects that you see, the fourth building, the third building, and any future building will continue to be predominantly union labor. And that's really what the gentleman's talking about in addition to, you know, other things. But we, we certainly meet that standard, and we have good relationships with all the unions because of it.
Great. And my second question might be partially for staff, maybe partially for you. There was a public comment about the sidewalk width, and I recall from the staff presentation, if I remember correctly, a long third, it's the 16 feet, which is in the pedestrian master plan, but on Claremont, it's 14-ish feet. I swapped that. Okay, thank you.
Swapped it.
And I recall that staff said in the presentation, the challenge here is that our zoning requires that the property be built to the lot line, and, and so thus, between the road, vehicle lanes, and between the property lot line, if I'm understanding correctly, there is only so much width, and that amount of width is less than the 16 feet specified in the pedestrian master plan. Is that correct?
Through the chair, yes, that is correct. Measurement of sidewalk width is also inclusive of setbacks, you know, within private property to the edge of the sidewalk. And there is, as you noted, a tension between the zoning code, which requires zero setback, which if all projects followed, would result in a narrower sidewalk. So the applicant has, you know, has compromised, set the building back on a voluntary basis for wider sidewalks. I think it is important to note that the sidewalk width, I believe, are net increase, are increasing versus the existing uses. And in addition, there's removal of curb cuts. It's an existing auto repair business that has a lot of curb cuts for more than half of the project frontage, so removal of those with standard curb and gutter would result in a, you know, improved pedestrian environment.
Great, thank you. You answered my third question, which is, what is the change from what it is currently to what is being proposed in the project? And it sounds like, although it may not be meeting the pedestrian master plan, it is actually getting wider.
Through the chair, yes.
Great, thank you. Those are all my questions.
So at this point, do you want to provide your comments?
Sure, I can go first. Thank you, Chair Williams. You know, I, just starting at the top, I often bring up our jobs housing ratio and the project's jobs housing ratio that comes before us. And so as some public commenters mentioned, if, if you use 200 square feet per employee, which is kind of the current tech standard, you end up with 168 jobs and five residential units, which is a jobs to housing ratio of 34 to 1, which I think most people would say is quite imbalanced. But I'll note that as it was indicated in the packet, this is a very small lot, it's a quarter acre, and the maximum number of housing units allowed on a lot this size with the state density bonus is 18. So in absolute terms, this project is not proposing a significantly smaller number than what is the max allowed on the site anyway. And I know that when Windy Hill projects have come before the planning commission in the past, and the commission has asked to increase the housing count to the max allowed by measure Y, that Windy Hill has typically accommodated that request. So I understand that the physical constraints of this lot and the rules and guidelines that were in place when this project was originally prepared and submitted may, may make it incredibly challenging to bump the number up to the max allowed of 18. And I know that there's a few Windy Hill housing projects in the pipeline, and so I'm hopeful that through the future projects, we can make up some of this imbalance here. In terms of design feedback, I really appreciate the changes that were made from the study session. I think aesthetically, I have to say that this is my favorite project that has come before the commission. As, as is stated, aesthetics is in the eye of beholder. I, I really like the very simple form of the building. It's not overly articulated, it's not overly stepped back. I think the finished materials are quite high-end. The brick and concrete cornice look really nice, and I think will be very timeless. I really like the lighting design of the exterior, but I can understand some of the concerns expressed by the public commenters about how bright it might be, especially at nighttime, and I assume that there will be some discussions with the city to make sure that the wattage of those lights meets all of our standards. I think my last comment on the design is about the art. I'm not sure if that's placeholder or if that, if that is a proposed concept, but I also really appreciated the art that is on the side of the building, so I hope that that is something that will continue forward as the project progresses. Those are all my comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ebner, do you want to go next? Okay, Commissioner Nugent, will you go next?
Yes, I'll go next. I, I do also want to reiterate, the jobs housing balance imbalance is, looms over everything we do as a planning commission and as a city, and this project does not help that. I want to say that I, I just want to note very affirmatively that I greatly appreciate Windy Hill's willingness on the project that I had the opportunity to approve, I think it was last year or the year before, that you did, where you basically maximize the amount of housing units that were allowed onsite under our current zoning standards. I think that that was a very good decision, and I'm very thankful for you doing that. But this project clearly is not doing that. It is two short blocks away from Caltrain, and so if I were to divorce the jobs housing balance imbalance from my mind and just think about, from an urban, urban planning perspective and sustainability perspective, it is good to have office near major public transit stops, just as it's good to have housing, because that's the kind of commuters that use Caltrain especially. And so that divorced from the reality of our jobs housing imbalance does make sense to put, you know, a mix of uses like, like office. However, that doesn't, you know, if we were in some other state, some other city, that would probably be more, more of a factor in my, my thought, thinking process when I consider this project. I find that the use of the state density bonus law for a project like this, to me, really feels contrary to the spirit of the state density bonus law, where it's really meant to focus on getting more housing, which, you know, you're using it as, as the law allows. So you are following the letter of the law, but it, it frustrates me that the law is written in such a way that it promotes office construction when we really need to create a better balance. I wish that this project could take some of the more recent housing laws, like AB 2011, and utilize that instead, where it would be more focused on housing. And I think about it, and I, I realize what our position here today as a planning commission is to really determine not whether or not we like the project, whether it gives us good vibes, whether it meets what we think the city should accomplish. It's really a matter of determining whether the project conforms to our laws, our ordinances. It's really a matter of determining whether the project conforms to our guidelines and design, where such discretion is allowed. And I find that, for the most part, this project does conform to the city's zoning ordinances, to the city's general, general guidelines as far as design, which are relatively loose at this point. I wish that we had laws and ordinances that could better guide development to meet goals such as creating an aesthetic that is probably even more fitting with the existing downtown historic core. I don't find this to be particularly fitting with the historic core. Is it better than an auto body shop? Yes. But we currently don't have rigid rules that I can say, oh, it must be this or it must be that. It becomes more of a discretionary thing in this type of project. And to me, it seems a little too modern still for it to, to really get the aesthetic quality that I personally would like to see downtown. That's not to say that it is of low quality or poorly designed. Your recent buildings have been of high quality, good materials, they're well-designed, but they may not capture the feel that I think many Samiteans, including myself, would like to see the direction, or to see the, the central downtown historic area go aesthetically. If, if it was up to me, I would have this be 90% or 70% residential and a smaller percentage commercial or some other thing. And I, I feel that, given the state of office usage and leasing, I, I really couldn't tell you what the, what the prospects are in the future. I know that some companies have a lot of difficulty finding enough office, while other places within the Bay Area have trouble leasing. So I'm, I'm just, I have no idea, I don't have, I don't have a good sense of where we're at here in San Mateo as far as what our needs are from an office leasing standpoint. But I do know that we need housing, and this is, again, five units. again, five units more than we currently have in this site, but it's also an opportunity lost for many more units that we could have, which frustrates me. So that's where I'm at. I'd like to hear what other commissioners have to say. Again, the problem I have fundamentally is that this site is a great site for many different things, but I think a different balance of housing to office would be much, much better.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Would you like to go ahead now, Commissioner Ebner?
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair Williams. This one's a little bit more difficult than it should be. And I think it has a lot to do with the timing, as Mr. Fields has suggested, changes in state law, and just overall economic conditions that exist today that may not have existed in 2021. And I think that some of this decision that is we are grappling with obviously has to do with the financial component and what's fair. And that's not really our job, but no matter what, I think it plays into the conversation as we have to acknowledge the applicant and the staff have put a tremendous amount of effort into this project to date. Yet it's difficult to have to incorporate that part of the discussion when your end goal as a city may not match that. You know, both Seema and Adam have talked about the housing imbalance, and and Adam spoke briefly about, you know, the intent of the state laws for housing. And I can remember when these formulas came out about three or four years ago, I was really excited when I found out that housing was going to have a lot of different leeways in downtowns next to trains, and that people would automatically embrace that and go to the max. Well, the exact opposite happened. People would put up 10 units on top of their building, get the concessions, and that was it. Well, we've progressed past there. And perfect examples here in San Mateo, Windy Hill has stepped up and performed at a higher level with the intention of helping the city and acknowledging state law beneficial to them and beneficial to the city. This one is a little bit of a step back. But I don't think it's totally contingent upon the applicant being more reserved or holding back. It's just you have so many different converging occurrences that have happened over the last 18 months, which have gotten us to this place. That's why this is a difficult one to accept the way it is. And I think it also goes back to where are we going to be in our next general plan? How is the zoning going to change throughout the downtown area? And what's the downtown really going to look like? How is it going to transform? And will we be able to meet our mandated housing allocations? And this is a perfect example where it could have helped us tremendously, tremendously at a larger degree than we are currently being asked to approve. I like the building. As I've said to Windy Hill in the past, we seem to have a lot of the same architecture. This one, to me, is a little bit more presentable than some of the others, which I have felt a little put off by because of the size. It is a nice looking building. I like what you've done with the lighting. I think that's, you know, something that will look very nice on this project. And the size of the five residential units is pretty nice, especially that corner one. I mean, it's a nice space. And I think if, and I think Mr. Fields had mentioned this, if we moved the application up from 2021 to 2023 today, you did not specify how different this would look. I could only imagine we would have more housing. We might have a taller building. We might have more affordable housing. But that's not what we have in this package. So the reason I did not want to speak first, Adam, is I wanted to hear what you had to say, because I wasn't sure where you were sitting on this. And I'm still not, myself. As I think I told the applicant when I met with them last week, it's this tiny little building. It's attractive, but it's full of pitfalls, if you will. And it's hard to say that this really is the best thing for the city of San Mateo. And I go back to item number C on the findings, and this is the catch-all. The development will not impair the desirability of investment or occupation in the vicinity, and otherwise is in the best interest of the public health, safety, or welfare. In that, I mean, it lays out three points positively reflecting how the project is good for the city. Yet the safety and the welfare can be impacted by a jobs housing imbalance, and that's obvious. And I struggle with it. And I know, again, that Windy Hill has progressed a long way from eight years ago. And they're doing a lot of good in this city. So that gives me the thought that, well, you know, we're not going to get that much out of this unit anyway. Let's just go with it. But still, I'm not 100% sure it's the best project for the city at that site. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I realize after my comments, we should put the slide up with the resolution recommend.
Through the chair. I wasn't sure if you wanted to do the resolution after your comments, but I actually wanted to respond to Commissioner Nugent. But I'm happy to go after you, or whatever you prefer.
You could go ahead now.
Thank you. I just want to say, Commissioner Nugent, I share many of the same concerns that you do. And I don't know if you recall, but when the Drager's project came before us, I raised many of those same concerns, and I ultimately chose to vote no on that project. That project had a jobs to housing ratio of 53 to one, and it was doing 10, 100% affordable units, which, to your point, there's the spirit of the law and the letter of the law. And 100% affordability got them unlimited waivers and concessions. But the rest of the project was quite a substantial amount of office. So I share those concerns. When I look at this project, the differential between the amount of housing that is allowed and the amount of housing that's being built is smaller than on that project, where the differential between the size of that lot and what could have the potential for housing there versus what was actually built felt much different. And so I'm trying to look at the projects as they come before us on a project by project basis, and trying to figure out where is that line? And it's not always easy, and it's not always clear. And I appreciate hearing the comments of my fellow commissioners as well.
Since we're having a bit of a discussion, you know, our role in this kind of proceeding versus something looking at policy is to determine whether a project meets our ordinances and our codes and our guidelines to the best of our ability. And it's to adjudicate that. It's not necessarily to determine what we want. However, there are potential points of there are some friction points within, you know, whether or not we can determine the project meets certain aspects, perhaps. And I think that's something that we would have to decide tonight. I mean, overall, the project does meet most things to me that, you know, reasonably you could say, you know, it meets our zoning code, it meets our ordinances, it meets state law with regard to using the density bonus to achieve a slightly higher FAR. It tries to meet our zoning codes with regard to the setback and our guidelines for the sidewalk, as far as, you know, finding that, finding where that can be achieved. So there's so in determining, you know, whether or not I want this project, you know, I need to, I need to, for me, I want to try to divorce that a little bit from this proceeding. It's more a matter of like, does this project meet everything that are in the either the conditions of approval or the resolution? So, you know, that's kind of, if we want to discuss that, I think that's where we would need to go.
Yeah, I think you make a good point, that it's not really about what we want personally, or not even personally, but what we think is, I mean, it's a matter of if it meets, you know, meets the requirements. I'll go ahead and make my comments, and then we can go from there. To start off, I want to say that as a person that works in a small business, I saw this as an attractive space for small businesses. I mean, it's a small building, the massing is, you know, I mean, at least compared to some buildings that we have seen. So I liked the scale of it. And I mean, it was, I could see, you know, my small company of 20 people, you know, being, you know, carving out a space in it. And so I liked that aspect of it. You know, again, I've said this before, I try to, I try to look at the space like, I really try to personalize it in terms of like, would I want to live here? Would I want to work here? And so that was kind of my first reaction to it. I also appreciated Seema's comments that the site would have a maximum of 18 units. So it's not a, you know, it's not a site that's going to have a lot of housing units anyway. So I personally have always liked the mix of commercial and housing. I think it is something that, I mean, it is actually a very traditional mix to have, you know, commercial or retail below and housing above. So those are my first reactions to the project, that it's not, it's not a project, it's not a site that's going to have a lot of housing on it anyway. I first saw this project when it came before the commission in 2021. And I just want to also say that I like the revisions that were made since then. I know that, I think I previously had made comments on the parking or the lack thereof. But AB 2097 allows that this building can be made, that can be built without parking at all, since it's within a half mile of the train station. I do think it's a shame that we will not be getting in lieu parking fees. But timing is everything. So that will not be an option. But back to the design, I guess I want to say that I like the revisions. I think that I think that the design is similar to other buildings, but it's tailored. It has a nod to traditional design. I think the use of brick has been improved upon as you've wrapped the building a little bit more on the sides that are still visible but sort of hidden. So I like that you addressed that. I think that was one of our comments previously. I really like the mullions and the delineation of the way the penetration was done. So I think that was done really nicely with a slight, you know, maybe a slight modern twist, I guess. I think maybe did I say this? The massing is somewhat traditional, really. It's not a stepped back, what I call wedding cake design, which I'm not a fan of. I mean, there's been, you know, a number of projects we've seen that I just think are too much, too many different things going on. So in my mind, this has a lot of traditional aspects to it, and that's what I like about it. So that was my design comments. Well, I guess not entirely. So other design comments are, I like the sidewalks are acceptable to me. I think that, you know, I'm glad we had a chance to follow up on that a little bit because I was concerned about that. And I think we talked about this previously in 2021. But I'm still not sure if you if you increased the Clermont Street sidewalk. But again, it's, you know, it's almost at the 16-foot width, slightly, you know, 14 feet is not a substantial difference. So I felt like that was fine. One other design comment that is kind of maybe just a personal preference, but in the residential units, it's something I see on all these projects, not just Windy Hill, but in fact, in fact, in other cities, too, when my daughter was looking for a place to live. The kitchens are always just a linear element along one wall. And there's never sort of, you know, I guess it's, I guess it's not currently the style to, but there's never sort of a peninsula that would allow for some additional place for meal prep or, you know, a stool and seating area. I don't know. I just, I, they're always just a linear thing. So you're just kind of walking past the kitchen counter. And there's no separation of a cooking space to a dining space, or a cooking space to a living space. And I just think it provides a little more opportunity for, you know, not sitting on your couch and eating in front of a screen. This is me. Again, that's not really what we're here to approve or not approve, I guess. But I guess, I mean, again, some of my comments are pretty minor. I also felt like that if there's no parking, we could actually provide more bike spaces and for the residents. I mean, there's one space on that floor, but I think that it could be increased instead of just meeting the minimum. So those are design comments. And I feel, I mean, I have the same struggles that all of the other planning commissioners do as well, that, you know, in these, in 2023, we're looking at a lot of, you know, we're looking at this jobs housing imbalance a lot more closely. We have high expectations for it. But I also understand that this is a project that came before us. I mean, I do feel some sense of, you know, I think that we're, you know, we make sort of a commitment when we see a project provide comments, and then it comes back before us, and the applicant has addressed the comments. There's some level of commitment that I think we, as a planning commission, have. I mean, I know that because I've been on the other side of the table. And so it's a difficult situation because we are looking at a different housing climate as each year goes by. So I guess those are my comments. I don't know where we go from here, but I guess we should have the resolution brought on screen. And do we want to have further discussion at this time? Or do we want to look at what we're being asked to adopt?
Through the chair, if I could just add something. So since we have four commissioners present tonight, just wanted to remind the commission that a split vote would mean no action or would potentially mean denial. So I think it'll be helpful if you were to discuss first, which way you may want to vote.
You think it would be good for us to discuss, you said, which way?
You may want to vote, just to see how the numbers are lining up before you actually make a motion and move forward.
I see. So we can take a straw poll, in other words? Okay. Yeah, I recalled that two to two would be a negative, basically. So so, I mean, I'm going to just read the recommendation. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution to approve the site plan and architectural view and site development planning application for mixed use project. Oopsie. Could you put that back? Could you put that back? I was just reading it to refresh our memory, because there's multiple things as part of it. It's also here, I guess, but. And a special use permit for construction staging at 402 South Delaware, based on the findings for approval and subject to the modified conditions of approval. And third, I mean, it's really a three-part recommendation that you're requesting, and the third part is adopt a mitigated negative declaration assessing the environmental impacts of the project. So I guess as a whole, I mean, I'm not sure if we want to break that into three parts or we would just want to look at it as a whole in terms of the project, because I, I don't, I think that I would recommend looking at it as just as a whole, as a project, and taking a straw poll for what the, what our votes would be. And I'll start out and say I would vote to approve it.
I would also vote to approve it.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Sorry, I would also vote, vote to approve it.
I just want to make sure I heard you correctly.
I also will vote to approve the project as it is presented to us this evening.
Doesn't really matter what I will say.
True. All right.
I will make a motion.
I will make a motion to adopt a resolution to approve the site plan and architectural review and site development planning application for a mixed-use project located at 435 East Third Avenue and a special use permit for construction staging located at 402 South Delaware Street, based on the findings for approval and subject to the modified conditions of approval, and adopt a mitigated negative declaration assessing the environmental impacts of the project.
Can I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call vote?
Yes, Chair Williams.
Approved.
Vice Chair Ebner.
Approved.
Commissioner Nugent.
No.
And Commissioner Patel.
Yes.
All right, that is three, two, one. So the project is approved. You're welcome. All right, thank you. So that closes that item on the agenda. And lastly, we have reports and announcements. Are there any reports and announcements from staff or city attorney?
Yes, I have a few. So we're looking at a possible cancellation for the next planning commission meeting scheduled for February 28th. We were hoping to bring a code amendment forward, but that will probably get pushed to March. We are anticipating the code amendments. These are process improvement code amendments that, that we'll bring forward, so hopefully not as intensive, but we hope to bring those in the March meeting. And then we also have an appeal for a single-family home that was a ZA decision for a second-story addition, so that will also likely come before the commission in March. In terms of other project news, so staff is actively working on the objective design standards. I know the commission has felt, you know, that sometimes our hand, your hands are tied because we don't have enough objective standards or policies that, that could help achieve some of the things that you would like to do. So I believe the ODS project will be a step in the right direction, and so we are looking at a future study session before the commission, possibly in the April or May timeframe. The housing element, I think we discussed that. It was adopted by the city council on January 24th and was sent to HCD on January 27th. And city council also had a Blue Skies meeting on February 11th to develop priorities for the city. So there may be additional items that are added to the planning departments or the community development department's work plan as a result of that. I'll turn it over to Zach to provide also an update on the general plan, and then we'll go into some trainings that we have coming up.
Yes, wanted to give the commission an update on, for the coming next, next few months on what to expect for the general plan update. We are looking at having a study session with the council on March 6th to discuss heights, densities, and how that aligns with major Y, and how that, those three topics will be addressed as the general plan update moves forward, and to receive any additional policy guidance that they may have, since this is, four of five members are new and have yet to really had a chance to really dive into the general plan update. Following that, we are-
Is that with us?
This will be with the city council.
Oh, okay.
And this is to receive direction on how to look at the heights and densities that go into the draft general plan, and then also how parts of the general plan update that exceed major Y limits should be addressed within the draft general plan. And then moving forward from that, we are looking at mid to late May to publish the draft general plan and probably mid-June for publication of the general plan update EIR. And then general plan subcommittee, one general plan subcommittee meeting to review the draft general plan, most likely in July, and then probably August, we'll be looking at bringing the draft general plan to the planning commission for two meetings.
And then just a couple of additional report outs. So we do have the Planning Commissioners Academy coming up. I believe a number of commissioners have signed up. Just, you know, a reminder to be mindful of the Brown Act and not to discuss specific projects, but absolutely, you know, enjoy the event and hopefully it's a, it's a good, good affair.
I'm sorry to miss it again this time. I think I missed it last time and.
And then finally, we are looking at a possible joint study session with city council to provide a legislative update to the planning commission and city council. There were a number of recent laws that went into effect in January of 2023, and the city attorney's office is coordinating on that. But I'll turn it over to Mazerin if there's anything else to add.
Nothing else to add, thank you.
All right. Do any planning commissioners have any comment or announcements, I guess I should say?
Through the chair, I've got one question for staff. So I think everybody is aware that One Shoreline is a countywide project that is put together for the purpose of researching sea level rise and the impacts that it has on the cities in our, our county. And part of that, that study was done with Pathways, the Pathways Climate Institute and the San Francisco Estuary Institute, which focused on sea level rise on shallow groundwater in Alameda, Marin, San Francisco, and San Mateo counties. They subsequently have finished that project, I think, last month, and it's now public, public, publicly available. And I know that One Shoreline came and presented to the council last year, a brief overview of what One Shoreline was doing and the timeline for them to be producing some substantial reports that might be used by the city during a general plan update. Other cities, specifically Milbrae and Burlingame, have used One Shoreline, and the city of San Mateo is also engaged with One Shoreline. What I'm, would like to do or suggest is there some way that we could get One Shoreline to come in and present to us. I would much rather see it being presented to the planning commission, council, and the infrastructure commission at one study session. Don't know if that's feasible, don't know if it's plausible, but I think it should be, if the material is now available for us to incorporate into our general plan, I think the time would be now. So I don't know what the mechanism, mechanism is to move this forward, but that's why I wanted to start the discussion now. Thank you.
Through the chair, yes, thank you, Commissioner Ebner. We can, staff can certainly look at it. I mean, you know, it's not on the agenda at this point, so we can't discuss it, but we're happy to take note of the guidance and, and look into opportunities to do a study session.
And just to follow up, I mean, staff has been engaging with One Shoreline on the general plan update and is actively working with them on the sea level rise components of the general plan update to make sure that our, our policies are aligned with where they're, that organization is going. And obviously, we're collaborating with them on another, number of other initiatives as well as they move forward.
Yes, I was very pleased to see in the last update of the general plan that they're, they were being used as a resource. I just wanted to make sure that this study is now out, and I think it would be very beneficial for us to, to use it in our planning also. Thank you.
The one other comment I had is that I am out on the 28th. I had notified you previously that I wouldn't be available at that meeting. It sounds like there may not be one, so that's good. All right. If there's nothing else, we can adjourn. Great. Thank you.